Good afternoon. Welcome to the Hamilton County Attorney Staff Meeting. And we're meeting on October the ninth. I'll begin by introductions on the dais.
Kristy Rishel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summerall-Dumas, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Streithhouse.
John Brugan, Assistant County Administrator.
Michael Green, Legal Counsel.
And I'm Hamilton County Commission and Board President Alicia Reese. We will go ahead and get started with our agenda. First on the agenda is our Director of JFS, Mr. Michael Patton. And you're giving us an update today regarding payments of ARPO funds and so forth. Okay, welcome.
Thank you, President Reese. Thanks, Commissioner, for giving me a few minutes to talk a little bit about where things stand with our provider payments. Some of those come up in a couple of meetings before, so much so that I think some of your offices have probably also gotten some contact from our providers. So this has been a work in progress. When I started last year, we had some challenges around provider payments. And so I wanted to make sure that you all understood kind of where things stood, where things are currently. And then also kind of go over where, what we're working on to make sure that our payments are current going forward. And so we're committed to ensuring that we have all of our providers paid on time consistent with our contracts. We acknowledge that those payments, when they're not made on time, cause problems for our providers, particularly for our small providers that we work with every day. We want to make sure that we say publicly that we thank all of our providers. We want to make sure that we maintain a positive relationship with them as we go forward. So just want to give you a quick update on how that's going. So as of right now, all of our payments are current through the month of August. With the exception of payment holes and rebuilds, payment holes happen when the contract is typically under review. It's waiting on a signature typically from the Director. Or when there might be a performance problem with the provider, there may be a payment hole. That's really the exceptional situation. But as of today, all of our provider payments are current through August. For those of you on the call, listening from home, just to give you some scope around our contracts. We average about 1,250 children in paid placements for 2023. So that kind of gives you the idea, out of 800 children we have in care, about 1,250 children are currently in paid placements that we handle through our contracted providers system. Over 120 contracts with over 60 different providers is our current contract scope. And on average, those payments total about $5 million per month. So I think that's also an indication of how broad our reach is in Hamilton County, how many children we serve, and how important that work is for JFS and our partners who handle our foster placement, our independent living placements, residential placements, and things like that. And so really what I want to kind of touch on now is kind of where things stand and what we're working on to ensure that we make sure that these payments are happening on a timely basis. We recently hired some talented staff. John Nelson, Jen Ketter recently joined the staff. We had two huge retirements that happened this year as well. And so want to make sure that we are looking into what we're currently doing. And I really have a lot of faith in the two folks that we brought on board to really make sure that the payments are going out on time. We're also looking at our workflow, looking at our workflow. So we're looking to map and identify backlog in the system. It's a complex process. So we get provider feedback, obviously we have the contracting department, which you guys are familiar with Laura. Wolf, who was on our call most of the time when you guys meet around contracts with JFS. We also have our fiscal department, which Sean is responsible for, and Jen is now our new comptroller. And obviously, we have a relationship with the auditor that makes those payments happen on the back end. So we're taking a broad look of what's happening across the board at that system. We're also cross-training new staff and existing staff to avoid future slowdowns. We want to avoid the silo effect. So you know, we want to make sure that all of the staff in our fiscal department are cross-trained. So that if we do have absences or we do have retirements, we have the ability to make sure that everyone in the department can cover the work necessary to keep the pipeline moving, moving fast and moving, moving forward. We're investigating and investing in financial technology to improve processing speeds. Our contracted department actually just put online a new contracting, contracting program that we think will help us save a lot of time in how we process our contracts. We're also working with partners like the Hamilton County Prosecutor's Office and the Auditor's Office to improve, improve processing speeds. When John came on board, one of the first thing, things he and I did was meet with the auditor and her team to kind of look at where we have opportunities to streamline the process, to look at where we can make sure that we eliminate bottlenecks. That meeting went really successful, and I know we are working with them on opportunities to advance that work. And John is also working on a specific project now that we believe will save significant time on certain payment types that go to the auditor's office. So I'm looking forward to that. We've also talked to the Prosecutor's Office as well about the timing of their review and approval of contracts. And that has come down significantly in the last several months. And so we're making progress on that front in constant communication with all of our partners that have an impact on how, how these contracts get paid and how timely they get paid. And then lastly, we're working to invest and rebuilding relationships with our community partners. We have a meeting scheduled tomorrow with our providers as well to make sure that we are out front communicating on a regular basis with all of those providers that we have, those 120 providers that we just discussed, so that they are aware of where things stand. But overall, the goal is to make sure that if our contract says that we will pay within 45 days, we work diligently to make sure that that happens. I want to make sure that you guys understand that I'm well aware of the fact that particularly for our small providers, if that doesn't happen, it can, it can cause some ripple effects. And we want to avoid that as much as possible. And we're working diligently to make sure that that is resolved as we go forward. And we're in a better position to do that with the team that we have in place and the work that's going on in JFS to address bottlenecks that we have in the system through training, technology improvements, and the like. So that's really the update that I have, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys have about the process.
Okay, thank you. So I do want to clarify my statement earlier. This is regarding the, the contractors that do business with JFS group homes, right? Specifically, group homes, okay. I did want to just highlight, I know I've been one, of course, my colleagues, I know Commissioner Dumas has asked about this as well. So about a year ago, July of last year, I always remember it, Ricky Smiley was in town doing a show for Fest, Music Fest Weekend. And I was there and people said, I gotta get to Commissioner Reese. And they got to me and they were saying that they had not been paid, small businesses. At that time, they thought it was particularly African-American small businesses at that time. And they were looking to, you know, get some legal counsel and have a press conference. And I said, wait a minute, hold up. I mean, I, it was just new to me and I brought the information back to you and Jeff. And it was indeed a major backlog, the type of backlog that could put a small business under. And so we were able to, you were able to work and get that resolved. So we thought that was a one-time thing. Then, some months later, almost six or seven months later, there was another saying, we're back at it again. And they mentioned some other counties, some of them do work against other counties.
Yes.
And they were saying that they didn't understand how the other counties could pay on time, but Hamilton County could not pay on time, looking at 120 days plus before they would get a payment. And then I sent it to both of you and said, we're going to get it resolved. And so now we're a year later, and we got calls again on there, you know, and I'm up here saying, oh, like, you know, what you guys told me, it's a one-time thing, we're going to get it together. And they're like, listen, this is out of hand. Because to get these contracts, if I'm not mistaken, there are things that the small business is required to do. And if they don't do those things, there isn't a lot of mercy or grace for them, is what they were telling me. And then they've got employees that they had to go out and get loans and so forth to keep their payroll going, so they don't lose the employees. Because employees expect to get paid every two weeks. So that's what they were explaining to me, and I wanted to put that out there to get understanding. And I appreciate both you and Jeff saying that, you know, this has got to, we've got, it is a bigger problem than we thought it was this a one-time thing. So I know some of them are watching, I see the, the payments are pretty, we're talking about $60 million a year, based on what you just said, if it's these $5 million invoices. And so, you know, they're saying that on their side, they're held to high standards. They got to fill out this paperwork, they got to, everything must meet the requirements. They, I think this is a reimbursable style program. They said kids are still being sent to them, but no money. So I'm trying to hear some of the things you've talked about. What is the timetable? Because I don't want to get this call again, because I'm telling them, we, we're on it, we're trying to get it done. Because we do have to understand, I mean, each of us, I mean, if the check doesn't come in, you know, every two weeks, our employees are going to be upset. They're not going to wait 120 days, they're going to probably quit. So I hear, I got these points. What, I guess my two questions is, number one, has everyone that's supposed to be paid up to date? Because she, I was told that Tiffany that's supposed to be paid up to date? Because she, I was told that Tiffany Kelly, they told me that even though they got this payment, they still now, you got 45 days on another payment that you, that they haven't gotten. So I'm trying to figure out, can you bring us up to speed? And it's not just them. I got some other people that called me. So it's not a one person. Angels Gardening, Angels Gardening Youth, Garding Youth, Angels Garding Youth called as well. K A A P S organization called. So can you, one, tell us, has everyone to this date been up to date on their payment?
Through, through August, everyone has been paid with the exception, like I mentioned earlier, of contracts that might have a hold status or need to be rebuilt for some, some mechanical reason with the invoice. So we're up to date through August with all of our vendor, vendor payments. Well, I'll go back to and address kind of what you said earlier about this being something that we've heard about at least over the last year. So again, I, I don't want to appear as on making excuses on this. This is something that's critically important to our organization and to me personally. And so I've talked to some of the providers directly about the impacts. I've heard the same, the same concerns that have been expressed to, to you and your office as well. But this has been, this is a complex systemic problem. And I think that part of the challenge that we've had, at least early on, is some staffing-related challenges. But also, I think just from a process standpoint, working to modernize what that looks like, at least as, as far as JFS is concerned. What, what do those mechanics look like? How can we automate things? We've instituted a new contracting program that I think will get, get us to a better place with respect to honoring the contracts. And from my standpoint, I think you, you also make a good point. The contract is a contract and both sides have requirements that need to be met. And so if we're not doing that, my commitment is to make sure that my team delivers that, what we're supposed to deliver as it relates to the timing of the payments on the contract as they're written. But we're up to date through August of this year so far. And my goal and my commitment is to try to make sure we don't fall behind again.
Okay. So everybody's up to date. Reason I was asking, we getting ready to go?
Through August.
Through August. We getting ready to go into the holiday season. And I learned something. I don't know, they were saying at a certain point, I learned from the previous auditor that they stopped writing checks. I think it's the first week of December or something. So do we have something in place? Because everybody wants to get their checks in the holiday season. Do we have, do you feel we have a, the system, I said, I know you said you're working on.
Yeah, sure.
Do we have something that will get us, make sure that we're seamless through the end of the year? Or maybe you have a stopgap process that will get us through? Because I know it takes time to get technology on, on.
Yeah, I think we, we, we typically communicate and the providers are aware of what that auditor process looks like toward the end of the year. So our goal is to try to make sure that the invoices that we have that have been submitted to us for the services rendered up until that point are paid for, for all of the, the kids that we have in care. Laura, you want to, is there anything in specific around the date on that?
We do have quarterly provider meetings.
Can you come up? I'm sorry, the people on TV want to see.
You might be able to more articulately describe that, that window when the auditor is, is not cutting.
Okay.
We have quarterly provider meetings where we will share with them, with all of our folks, the end of year processing, as we call it. Because the auditor's office closes the books at a certain point so that they can close out 2023. That is all communicated. We'll be doing that in the beginning of November. We'll have a quarterly meeting. And we give them deadlines to submit their invoices for November so that we can have them paid timely. And my team doesn't process the payments, but we do share that information at that meeting. And then they submit them in, and they have to be reviewed by two different parties within our organization. And we work. They put in overtime and everything to get those done.
Got you. Well, my point is, I guess that process has been, the providers have gotten the paperwork. They've gotten the invoices in on time, done correctly. But then there's been a breakdown in the payment. I'm trying to make sure that, I, I think we don't have a problem on the provider's side.
Yeah.
Because if they do, you, like you said, they go, you go back to them and say, it was your fault. We gotta get information.
Right, reconciliation.
But when everybody does it right.
Yes.
How do we guarantee that they're going to get paid? Do we, I know you said you're working on some new process. I just want to make sure, I know it takes time to work on a process. I want to make sure, we going into the holiday season, I want to, I don't want to get calls Thanksgiving Eve, I didn't get, you know, payment.
I understand. I, I think from, what I will say is that if they submit what they need to submit and all of the, and it's accurate, it has what we need to process the payment, and we are committed to paying it within 30 or 45 days, whatever that particular contract says, that's what the target is. That, that's, that's what I want to commit to our providers that do work with us, is that as long as we have what we need, our goal is to make sure that we meet the contract, the, the language in the contract and pay it within the date that it's, it's supposed to be paid.
Okay. Thank you. I'll open it up, Vice President Drew House.
I have no questions. I, I appreciate the presentation. I'm glad we're keeping up on this. I'm also glad that we're paid up, you know, a couple of months out. So yeah, just thanks, thanks for the information.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the information. And it's great that you're up to date through August. Anyone that's left behind or is waiting for payment, one is too many. But I heard you say earlier, the statement was, everybody does it right. You said yes. So what I'm speaking about is we have to be very clear that we're critically, how can I say, we're talking about federal money and we have to be accurate. So I know there are some providers that hand in their invoice that are not always accurate. And you have to go back to them to either look at the hours or who they served. And so I don't think you, you wanted to say all of them are accurate.
No, I did not want to say that. So when I talk about payment holds or rebills or things like that, that is a nature of making sure that as we get the invoices, they reflect the services provided to the children that we have in care. And that is a process that takes some time. But I, but I will also say that all of that work on our end, we, we need to manage that closely so that it, the, the time it takes for us to do that, we can do it within the days that the contract specifies. So I, I agree. But I thank you for allowing me to clarify that point.
Okay. Thank you. And I'm looking at average monthly payments of $5 million in invoices. That's, that's, I didn't know it was that high. I knew it was pretty high for sure. But also, what about kinship? How are we on the payments for kinship? Are we up to date for that?
Yes.
Okay. So there's no problem with kinship?
Yeah.
Because they don't have to hand in an invoice.
Right. Those are, those are typically voucher payments that we, that we make to them for the services that they provide through their, through the placement.
Okay. And as I looked at partnerships and you talked about the auditor and the prosecutor, how does the treasurer come into play in this partnership, if at all? Because I noticed they weren't listed.
I don't think that they're connected in that way, at least in terms of the, our, our process for contracting, bill payment, review of the contract language for the prosecutor, and then the auditor cutting the checks. So I don't think the treasurer is directly involved in that process.
Very good. And I just want to thank you and the new staff. You're very diligent and looking at creative ways of how, how to make the system better. And as you were seeing adding on staff was very helpful, but still looking at how you can improve it even, even greater. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you for, thank you for coming. I would like to get an update when the technology is on board. And then I do want to highlight, we always talk about, if someone doesn't do their paperwork, we understand they do not get paid.
That's right.
But what we have dealt with is these are the people who did it correctly, and they did not get paid. And if on one end, we're going to hold them accountable to be accurate, be timely, you know, all of these, there's legal rules, they've got to go, and the background checks and all of that. I mean, this is just not willy-nilly stuff. And they do that, then on our end, there has to be some penalty if we don't. They get a penalty if they don't do it right. And I did this when I was at the city when I had prompt pay law. It is still in place. And if, you know, it was, I think, 90 days or 30 days, something like that. But there's a penalty if you don't. And so it was an incentive to make sure on both sides that we're kind of doing it. So I appreciate the ones, we understand the ones, your paperwork's wrong, you got to go back through it. We understand that. But these folks, you even indicated their paperwork was right, they did it right, and somewhere we dropped the ball on our side more than one time. So I'm glad to see these new processes. I want to keep our eye on, because we're getting ready to close out. We're at the fourth quarter of the year. And then hopefully next year, we could, you'll have time to hopefully have the technology online. That, therefore, even, you know, we all lose a, a person working or just because we lost a person working doesn't mean it jeopardizes your check. Because these are small businesses. So thank you for coming and explaining. Thanks for bringing those folks up to date on the payments and keep us posted, please.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have our budget. We are in the budget process. We've got budget hearings. We've got different departments that are presenting their budgets to us. I will turn to Mr. Brugan, our Budget Director. You want to bring us up to date to who we have today?
Sure. We have, we have five more departments speaking to us today. This is the third week of five weeks of presentations. And today we have with us the Court of Appeals, the Sheriff, the Communication Center, the Coroner, and our Emerging C Management Agency.
Okay. On here, we have the Court of Appeals with us.
And I believe Julie Cars-Nessler is here.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Before I get started, I did have a copy of the inner report for each of the Commissioners, if I may bring those up.
Yes, give it to the clerk. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Julie Cars-Nessler. I am the Court Administrator for the First District Court of Appeals. I want to first thank the Commissioners for inviting me here today to share with you our plans for 2024. I know that you're well aware of this, but for the people at home, the First District, we hear the appeals from all of the trial courts within this county. The Supreme Court of Ohio actually funds the First District's personnel budget, and the county provides the operational needs. A little bit more about us, on average, 750 cases are filed with the court each year. Currently, we are experiencing an increase in case filings. Essentially, we're back to pre-pandemic case filings for the Court of Appeals. At the end of the third quarter, in fact, we had seen an 8% increase of cases filed by the same time last year. While we are experiencing an increase in caseloads, the court remains efficient in its disposal of these cases. The court is routinely able to maintain a positive, efficient, a positive clearance rate for these new cases that are coming in. And we believe that the court's continued efficient operations are in part due to our staff, as well as the technology advancements that have been made by the court over the last several years. And it's these advancements that are tied to our objectives for 2024. Specifically, we hope to continue the use of our advanced technology to provide court services and also to provide quality training, not only for our staff, but for local staff or local attorneys. Again, as the, as the Board is, is aware, we've been modernizing our technology and increasing services and opportunities for participation in the appellate process. Specifically, we allow participation in court proceedings and mediation, either in person, remote, hybrid. We've also updated our court website so that we can interact more with our court users. We want to thank the Board for your support of these endeavors to modernize the court. And if you look at our 2024 budget request, we anticipate that 2024 is going to be a business as usual for the Court of Appeals. Our budget request for 2024 is approximately $115,000. It is just a 2.3% increase from 2023. The minor increase can be attributed to the increase in costs for supplies, as well as an increase in our contract with our technology vendors. And finally, the Supreme Court, they've recently required the appointment of court interpreters at court cost. And so we included a budget item for that in case we had a need for that for next year. In comparing the 2024 budget to prior years, as you can see, most of our categories have either decreased or remained the same. Additionally, while we have been looking for ways to increase court services, we've also looked for ways to reduce costs as we change our processes at the court. For example, on the, on the screen here, you'll see that we have moved to decrease network support services. The CMSNet, they are responsible for the court's network support services. And with our change to the terminal server last year, we will, we were able to reduce the contract related to this, the Court of Appeals by 38%. We also hired a full, a full-time employee at the cost of the state in order to assist with our IT needs. This has reduced our reliance on county contractors and has allowed us to reduce costs to other associated agencies. That includes our prior website and email hosting. Again, that was either handled by another county agency that we've eliminated that budget need on behalf of the Court of Appeals. We've also reduced area printing, 15% of our budget we've reduced in that. We've continued to look for ways to communicate with our court users electronically to allow us to reduce cost in that category. I'd like to highlight briefly this afternoon, the two areas that are most important to the Court of Appeals and its operations next year. Again, you'll hear a theme from me. It's the continued support of our technology needs. Similar to 2023, many of our expenses are related to supporting those technology advancements. This includes maintenance and support for our courtroom and courting equipment. This allows us to stream court proceedings so that court users across the county and state are able to observe at any time. The hosting and support for our website, Microsoft licensing, as well as Zoom licensing. So those actual figures are on the board right now, and they are, account for approximately 45% of our overall budget. The other hardware fees that we are requesting some funds for is to update our audio equipment to ensure that it's ADA compliance. And then the final area of focus for the court for 2024 is related to training and support of our staff. Of the court's 31 member, court members, we actually have 18 attorneys. So we want to ensure that we have quality attorneys so that we can continue the efficient operations and disposal of cases before the court. And part of that is to ensure that they have quality training. But in addition, the other focus for the court for 2024 is the Board, we received a capital budget, or we received funding for a capital project to renovate our court space. And we were able to renovate one of our office space to allow for an extended training room. And so part of our plan for 2024 is to provide court training or training, continuing legal education, training for court, other court employees, as well as those attorneys that take court-appointed work on behalf of the court. So our, our request for training and support remains the same as of last year. And then on the board right now is just an overall view of our request for 2024 in the categories. So the court finds that this is a reasonable and necessary to support its operations. We want to thank you for your time and consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I'll open it up, Vice President Drew House.
Thank you for coming in. I, I don't really have any questions other than I want to note that we are hearing a lot from all departments about technology needs and many departments trying to get up to speed and try to make things really more customer-friendly, but also more efficient.
Yes.
By way of their different departments. And so I can see that you are no exception to the rule. So I, I appreciate that. I think that is the one place where we've got a little bit of room to grow in most cases. But I'm, I'm glad that you all are already kind of on the train, making that work happen. So I really don't have any other questions for you, but thanks for coming in.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas. Thank you. Thank you for coming in. Thank you for your report. This is, appears to be a reasonable budget, in my opinion, with a minimal increase. So thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Thank you. You too. Thank you. Next, we have our Sheriff's Department. And we have Sheriff McGuffey. Welcome back.
Thank you very much, President Reese. Self-set up here real quickly. Thank you very much, President Reese. Self-set up here real quickly. All right. Are you going to do the, is someone doing the slides?
You can do it yourself, or if you'd like them to help you, you can. Either way.
Got it. Okay. So our, our ask for 2024 first starts with just a little bit of review of the 2023 budget, which was, we requested 110 million. And that was because we wanted to have a budget for fully, being fully staffed in all of our departments. We were approved for 95.4 million, and we actually, that was a 14% reduction. And we ended up, you know, getting 94,174,494. So now we'll go to the 2024 ask. 124.7 million. And this budget, I want to note to you, includes full staffing for all of our units, divisions in the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office. Now, while I realize that it's a 30%, 30.69% increase from the 2023 approved budget, I have reasons for that. And I think you'll find that when we talk about filling a vacancy rate so that we have zero vacancy rate, that's what we're working towards so that we can help the officers who are working 12-hour shifts and all of the things that are going on because of low staffing, we are doing very, very well with our vacancy numbers. That's what we're trending up. And then also technology, you know, we, we're going to echo what a lot of people probably up here said is, technology is a goal, and we have lots of goals in that arena. And I'll explain why in a moment. And then also recruiting. You know, recruiting is a huge piece of what we do, and we are focusing on getting our goals met with recruiting. And speaking of, I'll go to the next slide, which is the budget drivers. The recruitment and retention, obviously, is our highest priority. Personnel is so important to community safety issues. We have, what we want are four dedicated recruiters that not only just recruit, but also work in that training realm, which is the ABLE training, our yearly training, the training that's, you know, mandated by OPADA, et cetera. And also, in that regard, because we want to recruit and compete with all of these other agencies that are recruiting throughout the state and elsewhere, we want to hire a marketing firm that has expertise in branding and recruiting. And they are actually helping us do that as we speak. Our goal for the November class is 50. 50 new corrections officers. We're hoping to hang on to all of those, which would make us fully staffed. Now, I want to get to the training issue regarding this budget. And the training issue is something that, you know, police agencies in the region really cannot do without. First of all, we absolutely have to have the training, not just for the minimum standards for jail deputies, which is 148 hours before they can even hit the floor, but also the peace officer training that we've initiated when I came on as Sheriff. We've been very successful in that arena. We've graduated 55 police officers in the, in Hamilton County, obviously in the state of Ohio. And those 55 officers are people we can put on the street to work off-duty details, to go to the hospital, to do a number of things. And most of those people, the majority, stayed with our department because they sign a contract that says they have to pay us back. We are looking to put on one of those academies every year at 20 people in academy. And I've gone through that with this, this commission. And also, the ABLE training, and then mandated state in-service training is coming. And those are hours that we have to devote to our officers, making sure they're professional, et cetera. Next slide is going to be that continuation, just as I talked about, meeting those minimum state requirements. When we talk about technology, these are issues we want to address. And I'll explain to you, we have three major issues. One, Chief Technology Officer, we absolutely have somebody, have to have someone who is in charge and, you know, is degreed in that area, actually knows what they're doing and knows how to build that out. You know, when we came in from the past administration had done, I mean, almost zero accomplishments with technology, almost zero. So we were faced with bringing the Sheriff's Office up to modern times. And in that regard, we need a project manager, because we're overhauling the JMS system, which is 30 years old. And we have a ton of data in that system that could help us with safety. But, you know, we can't get any of it out because it's 30 years old. The prior administration did absolutely nothing with it. Cybersecurity is an issue for us, and we're investing in that. We had a, a company come in and look over some of the things that we're doing in the technology arena. And one of the things he was most alarmed about is our cybersecurity, and the fact that we are lowly unprepared for someone to hack in. So we absolutely, and we're working on that as we speak, and we absolutely need to make that a priority, which we will with those monies we've, we've requested. Next, I'm going to talk about something that's very important to me, and that is the food that we are feeding incarcerated people. I'll note to you that the prior administration contracted for the absolute minimum dollar amount of food regarding quality and quantity for those people that are incarcerated. And, you know, I've been in this incarceration business for over 37 years. And what I know about incarceration is, when you don't feed these men and women quality and quantity, even minimal quality is what I'm talking about, it increases your fights, your assaults on officers, your complaints, your lawsuits. All of those things increase when the food is wrong, when it's bad, when there's not enough of it, when it's not served appropriately, when it is not of any kind of quality. And I can tell you that the improvement that we're going to be asking for is somewhere in 50% range of what we've already paid for the old contract. The new contract comes up here and will be negotiated in 2024. And, you know, it's something that I think is long overdue, and will be very well received when I talk about, you know, the things that, the drivers of the dysfunction that you may have in jails. A lot of it is related to food. A lot of it is. And, you know, we're not trying to serve these guys, you know, some kind of steak meal every day. Right now, they're on a completely soy-based diet, no meat. It is, they get like a bag lunch for lunch. I mean, it's, it's, it is not enough food to feed a grown man, or a grown woman. And we intend to increase those things, increase the quality, which really, I got to tell you, we're going from the bottom up. So those are our budget ask, and I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Sheriff. I'll open it up, Vice President Drew House.
Hello, welcome. Thank you for the presentation.
Sure.
I do have a couple of questions, and I am going to be referring to something that was not in the presentation, but rather a summary that we have.
Mm-hmm. Sure.
Do you, do you have this?
I have it. I have it in front of me. I'm well-versed.
Okay, very good. Because I'm going to be asking you some math questions.
Sure.
I don't want you to be at a disadvantage and not have that sheet in front of you like I do. So what I understand from your presentation is that you are attempting to fund what would be a full complement.
Yes.
Of officers. Okay. And, and therefore, that, that increases significant over the projected for this year, which is 94 million, and the request, which is 124 million, so about 30 million of an increase. My question related to that is that in last year's budget, as you mentioned, you requested 110.5 million.
That's right.
We approved 95.4, but the, the projection of, I guess, use of those dollars is just like a million under that. So the, I'm going from the 95 that was approved to the 94 that's projected. So about 1 million left over. Let's just, in my lay terms, that's what I'm going to call that.
Sure.
So can you help me understand then, as I know you strive to get a full complement, I, I will speak for myself, but I think I speak for all three of us, we want you to have a full complement of officers, both out on the patrol and in the Justice Center. But I'm wondering, and I want, you alluded to this, I think, a little bit, the 124 then seems like a high number, unless you are very confident that you're going to get that full confidence, or complement of officers. So you mentioned it, but you, could you expound on that a little bit? And the reason, Sheriff McGuffey, I'm, I'm asking the question is because we didn't say at the, the beginning of the meeting, the gap is 40 million dollars for our budget, from the requests that we've received to what we have available in revenue at this moment in time.
Yes.
And so we are asking questions of most everybody that comes in with a significant increase. What, what does this mean? Why have you asked for it? Just to help us better understand that, because we're going to have some pretty hard decisions to make.
Sure. And I understand that you are. As far as the personnel goes, the bulk of it, really, our shortages are in that jail. We do have some shortages on road patrol that we try to fill as we can. Some of those guys are also working the overtime and so forth. I will tell you, in the jail, our officers labor under a 12-hour day. So they're on those 12-hour shifts, which was not my request. We inherited that from the past administration, who put those 12-hour shifts in rotation for all of those officers without having enough staff to do it. That's number one. And I can show you the numbers on that all day long. The 12-hour shifts are incredibly taxing, particularly in a jail environment, you know, and it's a part of why we have trouble staffing with overtime. Because these men and women have already worked 12 hours. You can only get them for the next four. In the past, in all those 30-some years I worked in that jail, you know, you could split things, you could do a lot of things with an eight-hour shift. And there were always, you know, lots of officers to volunteer for those things. We have done the best we can. These officers are exhausted. They are exhausted. They are working overtime at least two times a week, if not three, and I'm talking mandatory overtime. We encourage officers to sign up, and they do. I mean, the bulk of the officers over there are really doing the heavy lift for the county, I have to tell you. They're exhausted. They're tired. I, I, you know, I want them to have help. I want them to be improved upon in their day work environment. And that 12-hour shift is crushing. It's crushing. It never should have been instituted because they didn't have enough officers to sustain it. But now we're dealing with it because it's already there. It's in the contract. And, and working on that, we absolutely have to have more people. We have to have more people for weekends, when these guys are sick, when they call off sick, when they go to military leave, all of the things that come up in the daily lives of normal people. We have to cover that, too. But remember, you know, we are doing a very important job in that jail. And that is, we are incarcerating people who need to be incarcerated. And in doing so, we are very mindful that lawsuits are a concern when we don't have enough staff, or they're not trained well enough, or they're not acting appropriately. And I will tell you, and again, I'm knock on wood, but for the three years that we have been there, we, we have not had those types of lawsuits filed. We have very minimal, one or two, in overall, and those are personnel issues. So, you know, I'm going to say, you know, we are really hanging on over there regarding personnel. I do have confidence, to address your question, that we will get to full staffing because we're working so hard at it, and because we bring such a great product. Hamilton County Sheriff's Office is already a model for the state of Ohio, and I'm certain that we will be for the nation as we continue to climb.
Yeah, I'm not questioning the need for officers. By the way.
Yeah, no, I'm sure you're not.
We all support a full complement of officers, and we all know that there's a struggle there when it comes to recruiting, and we're trying to be as supportive as possible. Yeah, my question was, how realistic really is the 124, since the projection for this year is 94, with the 30 million dollar increase? That's, that was the nature of my question. So you've got a certain optimism about the recruitment efforts that you've got going on?
I have an absolute optimism about it. Not a certain optimism, an absolute optimism. And I don't say things, you know, lightly when I come over here particularly, or anywhere else, you know? If I don't believe it, if I don't think it, I don't say it. I promise you that our numbers are ticking up. I already have those numbers in regards to applications and so forth. We hired a human resource manager, which has helped us tremendously. As you might know, the Sheriff's Office in all of its tenure has never had a human resource manager, and we're 900 strong. A lot of people can't even believe that. But she came on, and I got to tell you, has been invaluable in our outreach.
Great. Great, great, great.
Commissioner, if I may, I just wanted to note that, you know, we ask the departments to submit 100% complement budgets, and then we'll work with them to.
Sure.
Estimates for pulling back from them. But we want to see the request at 100%.
Okay. Yeah. And so as I run through, kind of, again, this math equation, so the vast majority of the dollars related to that increase are corrections, officers, enforcement, and then I guess the food is captured on the, under non-personnel?
Yes.
Is that what that is?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. All right. Because it's not detailed out there. I just was curious. One other thing that you mentioned is this 12-hour shift. So I was here when that was instituted, and it, from my recollection, it was a request of the folks that were at the bargaining table at that time.
Right.
If we need to, and I don't mean to open a can of worms necessarily, however, if that has become an issue related to overtime and morale and exhaustion, as you say.
Yes.
I feel like maybe that should be back on the table.
Absolutely.
Because it was on the table when this was last negotiated. And our understanding was that the rank and file were asking for it, and some, some folks thought that would be to their advantage. And so we went ahead and did that.
Yep.
Upon request. That was not our idea. And so now, if, if you have seen that not to bear out, to be something that is a positive cycle or, or shift for the employees, then I am all ears about that. And if we need to have that be discussed again in negotiations, I, I just want to say I'm all ears for that conversation. And, and I'm hopeful that if we can change back, if that makes a difference related to all the struggles that you're having and that you've outlined, then maybe that's something we should take a look at and, as the contract comes up.
It's music to my ears, and the ears of the command staff. We absolutely want to do that. We want to move forward with, you know, describing and discussing what we can do to fix it, because it has borne itself out as a bad idea. I do know that the prior administration pushed it as well. I know that they, I have the documents that they talked about they needed numbers, and those were flawed. I can certainly show you that. It was flawed when they brought forth the idea, the prior administration. And, you know, in my estimation, they knew it was flawed, but that's my estimation. So I am happy to address that. We absolutely must, because it is, it's crushing these officers.
Okay. Thank you. That's really helpful perspective.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your presentation, and thank all of you for what you do. It's so important. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions. You indicated four dedicated recruiters.
Yes.
Do you have any recruiters at net, right now?
Yes, we have, yes, we do. We have a recruiter. Her name is Lieutenant Michelle Moore. And she has been out there recruiting, working very hard. She's, she's training up, you know, volunteers and trainers who wish to kind of learn what she's doing. She is going to be a part of that four that we're asking for.
She'll be part of it.
Okay? And again, she's working in tandem with our new human resource manager.
Okay.
So that's super important connection.
And also, your contract with the marketing firm, I was looking at the summary, but I wasn't able to tell how much would, is the marketing firm allocated for that you would like to use?
That is a great question. The, okay, 150,000 is what we had budgeted for the marketing firm. And that's Veer Marketing. And we have already been getting product from them, suggestions and helpfulness, and the way that we post on Facebook, and all of those kinds of things.
Okay. Thank you. And I know you're asking money from the general fund, but just for my information, grants, how do grants fall into play to complement your budget? How much?
Well, you know, we have gotten a few grants. I wasn't. I wasn't prepared to talk about grants today, but I can tell you this, when grants come in, you know, they bolster and augment our current programs. And, you know, while that is great, and we make forward strides with those grants, and oftentimes can, it can affect and help our data and the safety of the county, we can't, you know, we, we don't factor them into budgets, because they go away. And if we build on a grant, we have to make sure that it's going to be sustainable. Now, we have had grants for various things, lots of grants for technology and things like that, and that's what we're using them for, to bolster our technology mostly.
And one reason why, thank you for that, one reason why I bring it up, is if you're not able to get everything you want, of course, from the general fund, then you anticipate looking at other grants to supplement your, your budget.
Absolutely. I mean, we continue to grow a very robust grant, you know, I don't want to call it a unit, but people who can write grants, people who are looking for grants. I mean, it's something that we have improved upon from the past administration by far.
And I'm, thank you. And I'm glad that you're addressing the food issue, because we've talked about just having some food that they can stand, you know?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so I appreciate that. Thank you for all you do.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Dumas. Going back to the recruitment piece, you just indicated that you have 900-strong. What's the, what number is, you know, what is the number, what should be the number?
The number should be 900.
Okay.
But we do not have 900. We are approximately 140-some officers down. So, and when I say that, I mean mostly in the jail, but also across the board, when we're talking about road patrol, certain supervisory positions, positions that are support staff, our support staff positions, the people who enter people in, into our system, clerks and so forth, all of those people are factored into that.
Gotcha. And the other question that I had was in the budgets, and I wasn't here, but I had heard that the sheriff's office prior to your administration.
Yes.
Continuously went over budget.
Oh.
And when you're over budget, it's not like the commission has the authority.
Right.
Both on the sheriff and the prosecutor's side.
Correct.
To come in and say, well, too bad. And since you've been here, I don't know if I've heard of the overruns.
Well, you have not.
Maybe if I'm correct, I want to make sure I'm correct. At least I have it, I don't know, Mr. Budget Director, you could help us.
Right. The past two years, we made budget, and we didn't know if we could make budget the first year, because it was so out of whack budget-wise, and so many millions over when we first came in, but we did. We made budget the first year. The second year, we're in our third year, and we're trending to make budget this year. You know, we may end up hitting that actual 95 million mark that you budgeted us, but we're trending to hit budget this year, absolutely.
I thought that was worth noting, because that's something I had heard prior to getting here, is that the sheriff's office.
Thank you.
Continuously was coming in over budget.
Yeah, overall, in the last eight years, what I, the numbers I have, they were almost 12 million over in those, collectively, those eight years. 20 million, I'm sorry.
Wow, okay. The other question that I had, in terms of this particular budget, because I do think it's important to note that we do have to make some tough decisions.
Sure.
I know that safety is a major decision, particularly what's going on right now.
Right.
Throughout the county, doesn't matter where you go or live, you, you know, saw Colrain Township going into Walgreens, and I go in at Walgreens a lot, and there was a crime committed there, where they went into Walgreens and had a stick-up. We're seeing it no matter what neighborhood you're in, and it's going across the county, and senior citizens, you know, under attack. So safety is a major concern. I can only, I'm only speaking for myself, I'm sure the board agrees, but safety has to be our, one of our top priorities, because people are saying, wait a minute, what's going on now? It's happening everywhere, and we've got to have, we've got to have a county that is safe. And it's, it's, you know, we have burglaries, and certain cars are being stolen. I got a, I think an email came out from you, Sheriff, about what to do with folks that had Kias that were being targeted, just so much going on. So I want to make sure that we do have the highest complement that is out there, and is sending a message. We did put funding toward the locks in the jails.
Yes, and that's going very well.
Yeah, so you were here last time, people were, you know, getting out of the jails because they didn't have the locks, and we put the funding, several million dollars to make sure that was secure as well. So I do want to make sure that we're budgeting accurately for what is needed in that area. I know there's some other areas that are probably be more amenable for cuts, but this particular area at a time right now, when, you know, people feel as though they need to feel a little more safe, I want to make sure that we have the, you have the tools, you have the personnel, you have the technology.
Yes.
You have the locks and everything that's needed, the equipment.
Yes, ma'am.
So that we can let everyone know that Hamilton County is safe.
Yes, it's our absolute number-one goal. We are meeting that goal, we meet it every day. Crime is unpredictable, as you know, but the problem for us is, is yes, making sure that we anticipate that crime, and we're doing that. Those are issues that police departments have around the country. We have to anticipate what might happen next and be prepared for that, which is exactly why we now have a aviation unit that includes many, many drones that we're using to solve crimes, and we're using to apprehend offenders. And we also have flock cameras coming on that will give us information about vehicles that some of these criminals use, and when they go to a scene, we're going to be able to get that information in real time. We're working on safety for school kids by using a camera system there regarding these, these calls that are, you know, very dangerous, that are false, and that sort of thing. So we are absolutely on top of it. As I said, it's our goal, and the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office delivers, and we have been.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas, you had your light on.
Yeah, I wanted to ask another question. As you have expanded your reach from Cincinnati out to Silverton and Lincoln Heights, what percentage of your crew is actually working beyond the city of Cincinnati and those other municipalities?
We have, we have some 200 officers working of our complement, working on road patrol, on our road patrol, our districts and so forth, and that is not including the supervisors. So we have some 25, no, 30 supervisors in those arenas, and, you know, I've got to tell you, we're doing very, very well. We have displaced a number of different gang members and their, you know, activities out of some of these higher-crime neighborhoods, namely Lincoln Heights. We've improved, you know, standards of living by simply increasing safety.
Absolutely.
I think everybody wants to live in a safe neighborhood. Silverton has seen the benefits of what our deputies can do. We solved that just horrible, horrific tragedy, the killing of the eight-year-old girl. We apprehended those three offenders in two days, and they are still in jail.
Thank you. The 200 officers are not inclusive of the 900 that you want in?
Yes, they are.
They are inclusive.
Yes, that's a part of the 900.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Yes, ma'am.
And I wanted to ask John, as far as financially, does it benefit us? We know the benefit, the social benefit of them being out there, but are we breaking even as it relates to what they're paying us, paying the county? Are we making any money off of the dispatching our officers out there?
We try to do a fair recoupment of the cost. We try to fairly recoup the cost of patrol services from the jurisdictions where we provide those services.
Okay.
The sheriff's office, we, we, and you could speak better to this than I could, fund the overhead sorts of things, the things that are cross-cutting against, across jurisdictions and the supervision and that sort of stuff.
Okay, okay.
And we are, we are trending up with our revenues when we talk about what you're addressing as what we call contract cars. We contract with these various communities, Silverton, Lincoln Heights, Anderson, and we're making sure that everybody, everybody pays their fair share.
Their fair share, yeah.
And that's super important. Harrison, you know, we also patrol there in those areas, and Harrison is stepping up, and they're also reimbursing us. And that's something that we've pressed for, for a few years, and particularly when I became sheriff.
Sure. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions, Vice President?
Sheriff, thank you very much, we appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
Next is our communications center.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. It's great to be here and have the opportunity to present our budget. I think you'll be pleased with our budget, as we're kind of in a, in a phase, as you know, we have a new building on the horizon, not quite there yet. We're trying to maintain the current facility where we're at, and also take care of a new, relatively new backup facility. So as such, you know, my presentation is very short and sweet, in that our budget request stays, you know, fairly sizable the way it was just last year, not too much of an increase. Our general fund subsidy, in fact, if I'm not mistaken, has gone down by $500,000. Part of this, as I read, is as a result of some of the indirect costs that have fallen off, that were no longer being billed for. We have the $5 per incident dispatch fee, those have been around our, our world of the 911 Center, know the, the controversy that that has brought over the years of the up and down of the, of the user fee, and I can tell you without hesitation whatsoever, our municipalities and the townships that we dispatch for absolutely appreciate that $5 dispatch fee. That has allowed them to do a lot more public safety-related things and invest in their own communities and not have to offload that, you know, directly to the county for the dispatching fee. So I, I meet with the police chiefs and fire chiefs each and every month, and I can tell you, almost every month, that's a question that comes up of, you know, is the $5 per dispatch fee, is that going to stay around? And, and I'm hopeful that it will, but let you know that they are very thankful, the feedback that I get is that it's been quite helpful. Having been between budgets, I'm really trying to, you know, as a director, you try to determine what are the, what are the things you need to build on your team, what are, what are the things that the team needs? And, and right now, again, we're in kind of just a, an in-between phase, where I'm trying to take as good a care of, of what we have, make the environment a little bit better. Right now, we have a, if you were to come to our facility, it's a little bit in shambles in that we have a lobby renovation that's going to actually expand and give us an extra office. I have a renovation of our kitchen that's being done, and so once that's completed, you know, our, our 1970s building is actually in very good shape and will carry us until, you know, we get into the newer building. Staffing is always going to be a concern of ours. Just as the sheriff indicated, we have a great difficulty in filling some of these positions that we're working on. We have a recruiting specialist onboard now, and who has been onboard for just a couple of weeks, actually about two months. And, and that has proven to be the way to go as far as getting out into the community to let the community know one of the, one of the job classifications we have here within the county. Most people don't go to, go to school or grow up saying, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to wind up being a 911 operator, I'm going to wind up being a police and fire dispatcher. For some of us, it just happens. And if you were to, if you were to question every one of the people that worked for me, they all found their path to us in a, in a very unusual manner. And nonetheless, in speaking for myself, having been in the business since 1988, it is a very rewarding career, and it's a career that I would highly recommend to anybody as they are looking for a career to step into. So we have very little capital requests, and I have, again, just a one-page, the slide is one page, actually two pages if you count, I wanted to show, show off our current environment, and just a reminder of that it's the people that, you know, I would, would not be a director if it wasn't for the people that, that work at our place. They too are working 12-hour shifts, they're working tirelessly to fill the shifts, and they fill the shifts to make sure that the calls get answered in a timely manner. I think that the, every community certainly appreciates and understands the need for, you know, the fast call-answer times, along with having good, highly-trained and quality personnel onboard. As far as capital goes, we're going to continue to invest in the current facility where we can and where it's, where it's prudent. I have a 911 platform upgrade that's, that's due to be looked at in the upcoming year, which would probably then be implemented the, in 2025, and that's going to be a complicated move when trying to keep our systems, sorry, when trying to keep our systems live and moving from one facility into another, so we're going to have to take great care with that. We have very youthful staff. With the turnover that we have, we have a very, very youthful staff, and so we are going to need to continue to invest more training dollars into the staff to try to get them up to speed. The experience is, is one of the, one of the few things that, that helps accelerate the competency of our, of our dispatch and call-taking staff. And in the absence of experience, we have to use training to make sure that they're adhering to our protocols, one problem. So our capital request for next year, one of the other capital requests that we're making is to invest into an outreach vehicle. We're going to partner with the, with the EMA in order to have a vehicle that is not only an outreach, but could also be used in the event of some type of, of an incident that is where there's a long-term deployment that's necessary. So in partnering with Nick Crossley and the EMA, we feel together, we can do a combination of using the vehicle for outreach when outreach is appropriate, but also having the technology onboard that, that can help us deploy to a neighborhood, should there be a long-term need for our presence to be in that neighborhood. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about our budget.
Thank you. I'll open it up. Vice President Drew House.
Thank you. Thank you, Andy, for the presentation, and thank you for mentioning the dispatch fee, because that was our attempt to be in real partnership with the communities, and I'm glad that you keep hearing about it, because that was a big deal. And I was glad that, that we could accomplish that, and I have heard no talk about any increase to the dispatch fee. I mean, we're in the middle of the budget process, but I've never heard anything about that, and I don't expect that that is going to be forthcoming. So that will probably remain the same. I don't want to speak for the budget director, I'm not trying to. I know that's one of the options always out there, but that, you know, we were just so glad to be able to, to do that in the first place. So the, the combo of EMA and communications coming together in one building, I think we're all very excited about that. I don't know if I should be asking you this question, but what is the timeframe around that new building?
We, it looks like it's going to be sometime in 2025. It looks like next year will be a construction year with a plan to move in somewhere adjacent to that very soon. The Facilities Department, Ralph Lenny and his, his staff are using, are developing the requests for proposals on the construction project. So as soon as that construction is gone out to bid, then we'll have a little bit better timeline on what, what to expect, but estimates right now look like Q1 of 2025.
Okay. And as a follow-up, I ask the sheriff the same thing. So your, what is your full complement of personnel, and how close are you to your full complement?
So, and the dispatch staff, which is predominantly what we talk about, which I call the radio room, our dispatch staff, we should have 60 trained communications officers. Right now, we are minus 16. Out of that 16, I have a total of, let's see here, I have 27 who are fully trained, and so there's, there's 17 that are still in some type of training mode in one way, shape, or form. And that's where I mentioned about the youthfulness of our organization. If, if you look at even just the, the percentage between 17 and 60, if I have 17 that are in training, in a training mode, that's a huge, huge percentage for us. And so we're having to really supplement our training, keep a closer eye, and use our supervision, which our supervisory ranks, we are only minus one in our supervisory rank. But we, it's a delicate balance, because our, generally, our supervisors are, come up through the ranks and are subsequently promoted, you know, internally, which is exactly what we want to have happen. We want internal candidates to see that career progression. Unfortunately, it's a very delicate and requires some logistical consideration when you look at, I'm taking from our dispatch floor. So right now, overall, we're minus 16.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you. Hi, thank you for your presentation. Andy, help me to understand, under personnel for '23, and then we go into '24, it's about $350,000 difference. So the '23 budget, did you not think about the full complement when you gave us that figure? And why is it 350,000 more?
We almost, and Mr. Bergen, if you could answer.
Right, and the 2023 budget?
And the, the 2023 budget is the, is the number reduced by the Budget Office's calculation for vacancy. So Andy would have submitted a full complement and is submitting a full complement again in 2024. We do the reductions.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. That's all I have. Thank you for all you do. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Thanks for all you do. I was hoping we would get in there in 2024, but it won't be till '25, but definitely the right move. So thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Next, we have the presentation by the Coroner's Office.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Andrea Hatton. I'm the Administrator with the Coroner's Office and Crime Laboratory. I vow this will be the shortest presentation that you guys will give, hopefully.
And Andrea, I just wanted to note, a coroner is out of the country, as I understand it. Is that correct?
She is. Yes.
Otherwise, she'd be happy to be here, I'm sure.
Sure. Absolutely. I know you all are familiar with our, with our duties and responsibilities, but for those watching at home, just a quick reminder that the coroner function is mandated by Ohio Revised Code 313 and requires us to investigate and certify deaths of certain criteria, namely as a result of criminal violence, accident, suicide, or dying suddenly when in apparent good health and unattended by a physician or any other death under suspicious or unusual circumstances. We are a two-tiered operation. We have a crime laboratory that performs, which is not mandated by Ohio Revised Code, but it does perform forensic analysis of evidence that's submitted by all of the agencies, law enforcement agencies in Hamilton County, as well as other local partners, state and federal partners. Our analytical disciplines include trace evidence, drug chemistry, forensic biology, toxicology, and firearms and tumor examinations. A quick overview of the budgets. The difference between our 2023 approved and 2024 requested is about $435,000, which is about a 5% increase over the 2023 approved. The, with our restricted fund budget, there's about a $90,000 variance. I can talk about those two separately here in a moment. The reason for the variance in the general fund, a portion of that is personnel costs. When I load the budget in to the system, I do not put any, in any anticipated increases. It's the salaries of the personnel on that particular date in July when I load those. So the increase between '23 and '24, it was the, part of it was the 3.5% that was given in January of this year. Also, the increased cost of healthcare and there was a minor wage adjustment this year in June for our deputy coroners. Markets increases were given last year for our staff. We did not give the deputy coroners or the forensic pathologists those increases until June of this year, and they were minor. And there will be no additional funding required in 2023 to, to pay for those increases. But they are included in the 2024 budget. A large portion of that $435,000 is an annual subscription fee for our new forensic information management system, which we are in the process right now of implementing, which will be fully implemented next year. That information system is what governs our operations. It tracks evidence, it tracks decedents, it generates reports, it generates statistics. We are replacing this system that is more than two decades old, that at best is limping along and is not reliable, nor does it provide adequate support for our operations. We also have a small increase in some software licenses. A lot of the technologies that went into the new facility in Blue Ash is governed by IT. So there are licenses, there are fee increases, there's software maintenance. So that is contributing to that $435,000 variance. And the remainder is just inflationary increase of our consumables. I want to note that the restricted fund funds 100% of our morgue operations with the exception of personnel, and that does include some of our forensic toxicology. So we are, as you say, putting some skin in the game with that restricted fund. In terms of revenue, we expect to have an increase in the general fund revenue of about $50,000. As a reminder, that general fund revenue is generated by the laboratory work that we do for our law enforcement agencies. We do bill for a portion of those services. We are expecting, or we plan to have a 10% increase in those analytical fees, which will help support that increase in revenue. The restricted fund, we expect about $100,000 increase in revenue and that, those funds are from the autopsy service that we provide to neighboring counties. I will, I'm happy to report on both of those ends that we have expanded our services in both the laboratory and the autopsy services, increasing both of those revenues. Our priorities, or I'd like to say our opportunities for 2024 are just to expand our services and expand our reach. We have enough personnel, we have enough space, we have the equipment. And so now, it's our give back for the new building and to continue to market our services in the laboratory realm. We're actually in discussions right now with the state of Texas, believe it or not, to provide gunshot residue testing to them, which could potentially increase revenue by about $80,000 a year. And we are hoping that some of our neighboring counties will refer their autopsies to us. We've been in discussions a little bit with Brown, I'm sorry, Clark County. That didn't come to fruition this year, but there's a possibility of that for next year. Happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you. I'll open it up. Vice President Drew House.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. You know, I, I may have missed it, but when the new building was built. The expectation was that revenues would increase because of some of the services that you're offering for counties that don't have the kind of facility that Hamilton County does. Did you just say it at the end? I may have missed it. I apologize for that. But I, I could see that there was an increase in revenue. What is the projection for the next couple of years in, in relationship to any ramp-up that you see? I mean, I, you know, are you still starting or still getting other counties, other organizations to utilize the service provided by Hamilton County?
Are you talking the autopsy side or the crime lab side or both?
I'm just talking about revenue. So I think I'm talking about both. But that was the expectation as this building was built out, and I mean that by way of the facility and the personnel. You know, what would be the opportunity to create additional revenue for Hamilton County? So I can see that there's some. Is, is that trajectory going to rise or are you already kind of maxed out where you are?
No, it is our hope that it'll rise. As an example, we were approached last year by City of Dayton, who, who used to send their laboratory services to Miami Valley Regional Crime Lab in the city of Dayton. There was a relationship change there. They came to us in the beginning of the year and have been utilizing us on a monthly basis. And we, we anticipate that that, that work will continue into the future with no end date. We've also gathered some of the other agencies that have left Miami Valley Regional Crime Lab. We can't predict exactly who will come to us, but we are marketing our services. And I think the job that we do and our turnaround and the quality speaks for itself. So when word is out on the street and those that have toured the facility and met our staff, they have been inclined to bring their business to us. And that's also happened on the autopsy side, which generates restricted fund revenue. Quite a few more counties in southeastern Indiana have come for us for service as well. Now, in terms of the trajectory, I don't know that I could predict that, but we are continuing to market.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumas.
I wanted to continue the conversation Commissioner Drew House had, because I remember when I first came, we were talking about building the facility and we had said, we already had said it was a state-of-the-art facility, and that's why we put so much money into that facility. So I'm wondering about the revenue that was mentioned earlier. Are you guys reaching out, your staff reaching out to get more revenue or do you need help to do that? Because my understanding, that building is just a state-of-the-art. And so, revenue should really, I see you put it as an opportunity, but you've been in there four years?
Two and a half.
Two and a half, okay. But I'm just wondering why we're not getting more revenue? And if it's because you guys are doing it, you're overloaded, overworked or whatever and you need help, we need to do that. Because we have equipment and supplies and all of that and personnel that, in this area, nobody else has. So I'm not asking you to answer that now, but how do we move forward? Because I remember succinctly in our conversation, that's why we put so much money in there, because we have things that other places don't have.
We have not seen a tremendous increase in our submissions from the local agencies. I think we're still a little bit at pre-pandemic levels. So that is a portion, that's a large portion of that revenue, especially Cincinnati Police. So as those continue to grow, the further we get out from the pandemic, that will increase the local law enforcement. But I think it's important to note that the agencies from outside of Hamilton County, Dayton Police, Spring Borough Police, some of the agencies that use Miami Valley have since come to us since the pandemic. So it has grown, maybe not at the rate that was expected. It would grow, but it is increasing.
Okay. I heard you mention two or three, and so we just thought it would be more. So I hear about the pandemic and all of that, but what do we need to do and not for you to answer to facilitate that process? As you were saying, we have thing, we have equipment and everything else to space that people don't have. And lastly, I know, and correct me if I'm wrong, we were going to have a commission meeting out there and the cable was not compatible for us to use that place. And so we couldn't use it. And I'm thinking, this magnificent facility, what, what is that about? Do you know?
Well, it's during the, the planning and design of the building, to be able to host a commission meeting, and I am not IT savvy, so that's a disclaimer here, those requirements were not discussed. However, I did reach out after that meeting, was not able to be held there and asked that the cable provider, if there's something we can work on to enhance what's already there so that it can be hosted. I know part of the challenge was, I believe, the, the public Wi-Fi was also part of the problem. We do not have a private network there.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. That's all I have.
Thank you. That was a very good question because like the Board of Elections, we have meetings, so we want to be able to have meetings in these buildings. Not that we, I don't know if there's a, a room in there, but whatever we're going to be doing, we may want to have our meetings. Gets us a chance to get out and, you know, utilize these buildings that.
Absolutely.
Were, were done. So I think that's a very important component. Any more questions, Vice President Drew House? Commissioner Dumas?
No.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Our final budget presentation today is emergency management.
Last, but not least. Good afternoon. Nick Crossley, Director of Emergency Management for Hamilton County Government. Thank you for having me this, this afternoon. Um, all right. So as you know, our program is, or your program is a nationally accredited by the Emergency Management Accreditation Program. That's an ANZ certified accreditation endorsed by FEMA, the National Emergency Management Association, the International Association of Emergency Managers, and the National Association of Counties. So everything we do, we try to be the best. And by achieving that accreditation, which is reviewed every five years, we continue to keep that quality up for you. Our program, as you know, is authorized by law to coordinate and administer countywide all hazards, emergency management and disaster preparedness functions for all of Hamilton County and its political subdivisions. The agency is concerned with managing the consequences of all natural and man-made hazards, including international and domestic acts of terrorism. And if finally, our whole community approach to emergency management reinforces that our agency is only one part of the emergency management team, and we must leverage all resources in order to meet the needs of the entire community. And as you heard earlier, Director Knapp mentioned a partnership with the comm center. We really think that just especially when we get into the joint facility, there's going to be a lot of opportunities for us to partner together. And so, I'll also note that as of this morning, we are one of 25 counties in the United States that is nationally accredited for its emergency management program. That is less than 1% of the total number of counties and parishes in the United States. So it's something that we're very proud of and that we hope that you are as well. So our 2024 focus areas, if I can, there we go. So we have, for the last five years, five, six years, really been working on ensuring that we have the plans and the procedures in place to activate and operate as needed as an emergency management program. In 2024, we're really looking at validating those processes and procedures, or continuing to validate those, but really hitting that hard with our partners in the communities as well, so that we can manage a large-scale disaster or emergency and verify that we, we have those procedures and policies in place. We want to begin regular exercises to, to test the program, plan the procedures over the last few years, support the EMA 911 building process, as well as manage our new EMA warehouse, which as you know, will house several response assets also and including, it'll help us develop a healthy relationship with the 513 relief bus, which will be housed there as well. So looking forward to, to furthering our partnership with them. We're going to continue our support of local emergency management program development. So in the realm of emergency management programs, the county is here, and then we have 49 communities in Hamilton County, or 48 and a quarter. And we have set up a program that works with our Hamilton County partners to ensure we have an overarching program. But then we've also set up a system to support every single community to develop an emergency operations plan and a testing and exercise program so that they're as strong as they can be and can manage it based on the resources that they have, so that we better understand how we might need to help everybody from Lincoln Heights to the city of Cincinnati should something happen. We want to continue development of our countywide mask care program. We talked about that recently. Between a federal grant and the ARPA funding, we will be investing over half a million dollars in that program and ensuring that should something major happen in Hamilton County, that especially until outside help can get here, we will have the resources to be able to help people and provide basic shelter and care while we're waiting for others to get here, as well as our household pets. So that's the goal of that program. And then, of course, we will update and create new emergency management plans. So it's not just having an emergency operations plan, there are many other plans, procedures that go into that. So the 2024, the ask, as the sheriff said earlier, I like the way she said that, I'm glad I'm not the only one to put it that way. So I started to think about this. So we, we're asking for your consideration for a continuity operations planner or a manager. And so what that position is basically expanding the basic continuity program we've put in place for a few agencies underneath the board and then for a few other programs in the county. So we do not have a comprehensive continuity program. And what got me to thinking about this was the power failure at MSD earlier this year. So what was the most noticeable thing about the power failure was, of course, the sewer issue, right? The overflow issue. But what also happened is the entire campus lost power. And so that's a unique situation where MSD is run by the city but owned by the county, so managed by somebody else. However, what I've started to notice across my almost nine years here at Hamilton County, that regardless if a department or agency is underneath the board, quote unquote, if they have Hamilton County in front of your name and they have a problem, they come to you or helping them to solve that problem. So for example, there's a legal requirement that if should something happen to the courthouse, that the county will have to work to find alternative courthouse space until the courthouse can be repaired. That's one small example. But it really doesn't matter who it is, if, pretty much if they have Hamilton County in front of their name, they're going to come to the administration, through the administration to you, asking for assistance. And so what we hope this program does is take us, start taking us down the path of working with the critical departments, identifying the critical functions. We'll be able to codify all those incredible procedures we made and did during the pandemic where we continued to do business, but we were able to do it remotely. We want to be able to document that process. And then from that, we can figure out, should something happen, for example, in this building, and there's lots of critical functions in this building, how much space, what resources do we need to be able to reconstitute the public-facing services for those services? And then, how many staff can work remote to support those public-facing resources? And this is just one of the dozens and dozens of buildings that you own and manage throughout the county. And so that, we feel, is a very, is a very big ask. For me, our budget is relatively small, as you know, but it's a critical position to expand our continuity program across the breadth of Hamilton County government to make us more prepared, identifying where are we at, what are our capabilities, what are the gaps, and how will we meet those gaps? And when I say meet the gaps, as you know, I don't necessarily believe in we need to go out and buy something or we need to ask for funding. But we need to set up a procedure in place so that should something happen, we at least know what we're going to do in advance, so it makes the future process easier. So that's a, that's an ask there. We want to support the county hazmat first responders in the amount of $20,000. So that $20,000 is a match that we have to, for some grants we get for training, we get on average $100,000 a year, 20,000 of it is a match. We were taking that money out of our CERC funding, so every. We were taking that money out of our CERC funding, so every chemical facility in the county that has to file a federal report or a federal identification of what they have on site, we get a portion of those, since we've been getting consistently about $100,000 a year. The cost of the personnel who run that program and the support we provide to the various hazmat teams, and we provide several pieces of software they need to be able to respond appropriately, that cost has gone up, as you know. And so now we're leveling out, because that money never goes up, because it's just part of a fee. And we've been consistent at about 650 extremely hazardous and hazardous material sites in Hamilton County. And so in order to continue this training, and when I say training, we are training police officers, firefighters, hazmat teams, ER personnel, so that they know what to do if they get a biological incident or a hazmat incident. We're training the private sector. We partner with the private sector. As you know, we have lots of chemical facilities in Hamilton County. And so, and it's ironic, we did a tanker truck training this year, and four days ago, there was a tanker overturned on Riverside Drive, right near that high school that's down there on the river, if you know, down below Columbia Tusculle. A tanker overturned underneath the underpass, it got stuck and was leaking. Luckily, it was not something volatile or extremely hazardous, however, it could be. And so this training we provide, and again, for $20,000, you provide the match for $100,000 worth of training for our, for Hamilton County. And then finally, the Ohio Revised Code requires the county to have an emergency operations center exercised annually. We generally been just absorbing that into something else that we do to make sure that we meet that requirement. However, as our program matures, as our plans and procedures become more complex, and we engage more partners, for example, with our mass care program, we are establishing our own coalition of organizations active in disasters. So everything from Catholic charities to our standard first responder agencies to the smallest nonprofit that can help our residents, we are seeking to build a relationship with them. We need to start working with them in training and exercises. And so this annual ask is $30,000. Now, continuing on, I'm just cruising, so I hope nobody minds. So what have we done to sort of mitigate this? So obviously, our personnel costs have gone up. So when you were, when you implemented your new salary scale, we implemented that salary scale as well. We've moved some personnel around off of a grant. The money stays the same. We just took them out of the grant because it's less reporting requirements for us. And then also, we want the other position. We've reduced EOC costs to half of what they used to be. So we anticipate two things. One, I did receive, or we did apply for and receive a federal grant in the EOC. You know, we have that large video wall, which is very expensive. We have received approval for a $350,000 Department of Homeland Security grant to fully pay for that replacement, rather than coming to you for half of that funding, which is what our agreement says with the city of Cincinnati. So that's, that's a significant savings there. We did recently have a retirement, and so we have eliminated that FTE at a savings of about $57,000 a year and worked out a way to where that position is covered at no cost to the county. So we're very excited about that. And then we've had a few other things. We did get a little bit of revenue from Alert Hamilton County. We work with our local communities so that they can have an emergency learning capability. However, we charge them basically for our time to train them and keep them up to date on it. So we don't want to charge, for example, I know one village was paying $5,000 a year for a system. It's a very small village, so $5,000 is a lot of money to them. We charge them $500 a year. So again, not trying to make money, but at the same time engaging the system. It also helps us sell Alert Hamilton County at the local level if they're using the system. Finally, I'm getting ahead of myself here. Pressure is obviously increased personnel cost. Everybody said that today. So we have the EMA warehouse coming online. We're still evaluating that. Part of the warehouse is, as you, as you may remember, instead of contracting for service on our outdoor 196 Siren outdoor warning system, that's been taken over by facilities. We anticipate a savings there at some point. We're getting them set up in our warehouse so we can support them. And then, of course, we continue to provide training exercises for the county and local community partners. So again, the more prepared the local communities are to manage the small to mid-sized disasters, the more available we are to help the more impacted communities. But we have to be prepared at all times, depending on the size and scope of the disaster. And that is all I have.
Thank you. I'll open it up, Vice President Drew House.
Thank you, Nick, for the presentation. So as we look then at the request or the ask for increase in the general fund subsidy, the one sheet that you had talks about the different, the $83,000, the $20,000, the $30,000. Is the remainder of the increase for request personnel?
Yes.
Okay.
So, and I think since that was written, we did decide to eliminate that one position, so I think that's a further savings.
Yeah, I just saw that there was a delta there. I didn't know what it was. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you. Thank you, Nick, for your presentation. Can you clarify for me, I'm looking at the sheet that says sources, general fund transfer and reimbursements from the city of Cincinnati for shared personnel? So what do we share with them?
So we did share the position we eliminated. That cost is gone. So we previously and currently manage a federal grant called the Urban Area Security Initiative Grant. So when that funding ended the first time, I approached the city of Cincinnati. So everything we buy, and that's a multimillion-dollar grant, it's, we're probably tracking $30 million in grant equipment purchases in concert with the city. So I told them that they needed to help, told, asked, that they needed to help fund that position as well. So they, they offset the cost of that one staffer 25%. Because we are required to track every single person for equipment from the point of purchase to the point of disposal, and that could take 20 to 25 years where we have to manage that. So I felt it was equitable for the city to help fund that, because they're a joint signatory on this federal grant.
Great. And lastly, the continuity of operations planner, is that a need or a want?
I think it's a critical need. So again, you're in charge, the board is in charge of a $1 billion corporation, 800 to $1 billion corporation. And we continue to get requests from departments and agencies, both under the board and outside the board, for help developing, if you want to call it a business continuity plan. And we have limited resources, because technically, we work with the agencies and departments that are critical to the emergency management program, and that's four departments under the board. But we want to work with all of them. And so to us, what I'm going to do is, so I'm asking you for that one position, and then our system, our trainer, our exercise person will help support that. So as we develop these plans and procedures for these individual departments and agencies, we will then use our current resources to help run, help them test their plans and improve their plans. Right now, we review every continuity of operations plan every three years. We currently have our continuity of government plan that we wrote for you a couple of years ago, under review by the prosecutor's office. And so that will be expanded without an increase in cost by our agency. So I, I think it's critical, because again, to me, the eye-opener was what happened at MSD, when you had that complete failure of all their systems. And that could happen at any time to any county agency anywhere, and there is no comprehensive analysis of what your vulnerabilities are, what your capabilities are, where the gaps are, and how we're going to fill those gaps. Not to say that we couldn't in an emergency. With good leadership, you can get through anything. But wouldn't it be better if?
Okay. Thank you. And I remember you were trying to hire a diversity coordinator, outreach person. Did that ever happen?
No, we had, we're out again on that position.
Okay.
We're still, we're still working on the outreach.
But it's in here in case you need to hire one. Yeah. That's all I have.
And actually, we just changed our policies and procedures to where we all participate in outreach in the community. We've done several, this is the season of what we call in the emergency services world the touch-a-truck, where I'm sure you go to them in the community. And so we get several of those requests a week, so I just required all staff to sign up for one or two a year. We will all be out in the field promoting emergency management with the residents in Alert Hamilton County.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nick. We appreciate you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That was our last presentation. Mr. Brugan, do you have an update on what's next?
We will continue with these presentations next Wednesday with five more departments.
Okay. Thank you. There's no further, I'm sorry, Vice President Drew.
I have one quick announcement. I wanted to announce that I have a new intern in my office.
Okay.
Her name is Claire Wagner. She's in the back of the room. She goes to Anderson High School, and she's with us, I don't know how many months, but for a few months. So welcome, Claire, to the county.
Welcome, welcome. Okay, anything, Commissioner Dumas?
No, I have nothing.
Okay. All right, if there's nothing further, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drew House?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?